This is what we're opening up business today. I saw this been out of five years.
Yeah, exactly.
Sure.
Yeah.
I told you here there's several on seventeen.
Yeah.
They have to do something.
You love those, right?
Yeah. He happened to be out for the, I guess it was maybe eight.
That was before my time.
Is she ready? You're ready, Sherri, thank you.
Well, I wouldn't hear from that.
Okay, I think we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order here. Tonight of the Pecoson Planning Commission, Monday, May 21st, we'll call to order. And if you would be so inclined to stand and join me in the Planning Commission members in the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever.
Amen.
Now, we'll follow the Lord's Prayer by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for the work session, April 16th, 2018. Do we have any motion to accept this as written? Or is there some correction that needs to be made? If there isn't, we'll take a motion to accept as written.
I move that we accept them as written.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, Karen.
Vice Chairman Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Gordon?
Abstain.
Commissioner Denison?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Yes. Passed by a vote of five to one abstention.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the regular session minutes for the meeting of April 16th, 2018?
So moved.
Have a second to accept those minutes?
Second.
All right, Karen.
Commissioner Gribble?
Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gordon?
Abstain.
Vice Chairman Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
And that vote passed by a vote of five to one abstention.
All right, we'll move on to the audience for visitors. And in the audience for visitors, we ask that you come to the podium and give your name and your address. And this would be for an item, anything that you would have to say other than regarding the public hearing that's on our agenda. So if you have something other than that, comments other. Public hearing, I guess we can go ahead and close that as it appears no one wishes to speak. So we will move on to the public hearing item tonight, which is the proposed 2008 to 2028 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And is there any presentation?
Yes, I have no slides for this evening, but I can just give a brief summary of this draft and the changes that have been made to it. So this is considered the third draft of the new comprehensive plan. Its main function is to incorporate changes that were suggested after the April 16th work session where the second draft was presented. This is very similar to that second draft. There have not been a lot of major changes made. The most significant changes were, for one, we've removed figure six dash one, which was kind of a flow chart of the government structure, which we removed as being somewhat misleading and outdated. We've updated the school consolidation section in chapter 6.3 with current information about the city's recent decision on updating the middle school. We've also added enrollment figures that we did obtain from Pecoson's public school system in chapter 6.3 to try and complement the school figures we already have in the demographics chapter. We have added in the future zoning and future land use maps. We finalized those as map eight dash one and eight dash two, and we included it at the end of the land use chapter. And finally, we've added chapter nine, which is an appendix chapter, and that includes a new work program with tasks based on the recommended strategies that are in the current chapters. We've added an amendments page reserved for any amendments, and we've added a reference documents section with a number of supplementary studies or documents that are cited within the comp plan. Other than that, we've made a number of very small changes. Most of these are one line, sometimes even one or two words. We've added about 11 typos or minor revisions, continuity changes based on comments from the city manager. We've added some revisions based on Commissioner Travis, as well as Commissioner Emmett and Commissioner Fenixson's comments from the work session. And that is the general summary of the changes that are in the current document.
All right, thank you, Danan. I guess with that, before we take it under consideration, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishes to speak concerning this item, please come forward and give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Robert Cox. I think most, many of you know me. I live at 14 Pecoson River Drive, and I was part of the Comprehensive Plan Team, Community Participation Team, CPT. I remember reading the last Comprehensive Plan and the several hundred pages in it. So when Karen emailed me the copy of this draft last Thursday, I kind of braced myself to sit down and tackle it, but I was very pleasantly surprised. And I'd like to compliment the staff and commission on this very good document. I think it's actually very interesting reading, and although I've not really had time to fully look through it, I found it to be carefully thought out and a well-written document that certainly provides a comprehensive look at both Pecoson present in the earlier chapter and future development ideas. And I'd recommend this to anyone wanting to go to one place to pretty much find out anything about our city. I think it's very good that way. I'd first like to make some general comments and then address the chapters that I'm most interested in and actually got to read, and that's three, housing, economics, number four, six, community services, and eight, land use. My general comments are, first, that whoever did the editing did an excellent job, not only with the language, but in cutting the old plan down by quite a bit. I'm not sure how much paper you've saved by that. This is a major public service in itself. And I particularly thank you in the general comment for removing the old title, Building a Sustainable Community, which I always found quite inappropriate, giving a message that conveyed to me, at least, that the city was primarily interested in attracting outside investment just to keep our taxes down. That was just the way it came to me, and I probably, many had the same feeling. So I was very pleased to see that. And as it's made clear in this document, you've discussed in this update that sustaining the small-town atmosphere that seems to be the direction that most citizens support in this community is our goal. I appreciate how thoughtfully and well the survey results have been presented. I thought this was a very good part of this plan and summarized with good objective discussion in each chapter, certainly that I read. I scanned most of them. And this was particularly important to me, as somebody had participated for a year on the CPT. And I feel that including the survey results written as an integral part of each chapter gives appropriate weight and recognition to the public opinions that a lot of citizens spent time helping us in CPT collect. City leadership now has this information right there as a helpful guidance to look at easily in making future policy and land use decisions on behalf of the citizens. Now to the individual chapters, I just have a few comments. Housing, this is a very important part of the plan, I think, and I appreciate how the difficult issue regarding affordable housing has been taken on thoroughly and openly discussed, very openly discussed, I thought, in this chapter. The objective strategies and recommendations make a lot of sense to me, and I just hope that we can implement some of them. Chapter four, economics. This is an area that I worked on quite a bit during the CPT, and I'm most interested in it. I like the way that the plan again gives a very good background as to where we are in Pecoson right now with business, especially retail development. And it recognizes that most people seem pretty comfortable with retail that's currently available in the city. I thought that was an important finding and pretty comfortable with this being a bedroom community. And it seems to me that it is a very important issue that should perhaps have more emphasis in the concluding objectives than there are. The underlying assumption of this chapter and the reasoning for the city to spend money on the EDA in that section of the economics chapter has understandably been in the belief that public investment will attract private investment, boost city revenues, and therefore keep residential taxes down. This really hasn't been the case, and I think the philosophy is quite misguided. Based on information available from the city finance department, Pecoson spent over $650,000 in funding EDA from 2010 to 2016. That's the latest information I have. During the same period, city revenues from business taxes totaled approximately $480,000. In other words, we spent around $170,000 more than we took in. I don't have anything later than 2016, but I would imagine this situation continues. I'm by no means suggesting that we do away with EDA at all. I think having an active effort to promote the city for the right types of businesses is really the way to go, and they're very good at promoting this, the idea of our fine city. The comp plan objectives in this, in the chapter are generally in line with this, but I do think we should get away from the idea that we're failing if we don't get business to come here over the local competition that we worry about from Yorktown and from Newport News that's mentioned in the document. So I encourage the Planning Commission and city leadership to think more about the importance of businesses adding a vibrant and high-quality, adding to our high-quality community to make it more vibrant, more diverse in what we have here. It's nice if businesses generate income in taxes, very nice, and to generate jobs, but it's not as important, in my opinion, as encouraging the type of businesses that build on strengthening the small-town qualities that we have here. The comp plan does have some of this flavor in recognizing that there are some business types that are more suitable than others, but I'd like to see a shift in the emphasis in the objectives and strategies to promote this idea more. The plan clarifies that the city will need to make some major investments in infrastructure improvements in order to support EDA objectives. In my opinion, we'd be better advised to spend city funds to improve our schools that, per the survey, the school system is considered our most important asset by the great majority of our community residents. Chapter six, community services. I'm a member of the city's Architectural Review Board, so I was especially interested to read the section here setting out the organization and roles of the community's boards, including my own. The text accurately describes the board's role, but there's one thing that I consider very important that's missing, and that's the number of terms that we're permitted. This has been an important issue for me personally, as on the Architectural Board has a maximum of two terms, and my term expires next year. I really do agree with this policy, though, although I enjoy being on the board, as I believe it's healthy for local government to have regular new blood on the committees and commissions, and I'd like to see the same philosophy applied to all of our boards and committees. I suggest adding this as an objective and/or strategy in the comp plan, and I recognize that a number of people sitting here, like me, have been on boards and served several terms, but I do think it's important for our government to reflect changes regularly in the community. Last thing is on land use, chapter eight. This is the chapter where pretty much everything comes together, and I particularly appreciate the section from my side, which you include, is community appearance, which I consider very important with my background, and I think it's, a lot of it is what makes Pecoson Pecoson and keeps Pecoson a quality place with a certain sense of place that we have here. I think the goals, objectives, and strategies are generally good and will help in shaping our future development. I am, however, concerned that by shifting the emphasis from With Creek Road Corridor, I think that's what we call it, to promoting the development on Victory Boulevard will lead to yet more empty buildings and difficulty attracting stores to fill those buildings. If Legacy does get built and really adds, I think, 80,000 square feet of new retail space, I would expect With Creek to be empty. And I don't see any recognition of this in the plan. I may have missed it. But I would recommend that the commission consider alternative ideas for how the With Creek Corridor land use will look and options for it if and when the center of the city shifts to Legacy, which it probably will within the next 20 years of this comp plan. We seem to be repeating what happened to the old city hall and police station section of Pecoson Avenue when the With Creek Shopping Center, which I guess we all know as a farm-fresh shopping center, which we won't do much longer, I think that must have been built in the 60s, 70s. So I fear that we're repeating, we'll see the repeat, that's the natural evolution of how business moves around cities, and we're moving it closer up the access corridor. Thank you for listening to the comments.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cox. Thank you for serving on the CPT. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Randy Trestrail, live at 212 Beach Road.
What was your last name? Randy?
Trestrail, T-R-E-S-T-R-A-I-L. Thank you for all the work that you did on this document. I'd like to say that, in particular, I liked the survey results at the top, near the rubric of each section. I don't recall that being in there the last time. Like Rob, I have, my concerns are similar. I am concerned about good governance in our city. And that being said, I agree with him. I think that we need some term limits or continuing education for our boards or some type of transparent, and this may be in there, I have to say, most of the time I focus on environmental things, but I think good governance is important. So I looked closely at the, more closely, at the environmental sections than I did at the governance section. So you may have this in there, and maybe you can talk about it in your remarks, but how appointments are made to boards, what the process is and what the training is for our various boards in the city, I think that's important. There was an incident with the zoning board where they granted some waivers, which probably they shouldn't have according to the regulations. So I contacted the DEQ, and they looked at a few of the cases, and they said that they needed some re-education. So I think some of our boards need to be closely looked at. So I agree with Rob, there needs to be term limits or a very transparent process for appointments and re-education of the boards. I'm also concerned about, you know, if Legacy is built, the tremendous amount of trees, tree canopy that we would lose with the 100 acres of development, I didn't see that specifically addressed. And some kind of inventory of our tree canopy would be good. We lost all of our trees on, a lot of our trees on With Creek Road that were not replaced. And I think that we need that for climate change and flooding, and that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and the Planning Commission will now take this under consideration and discussion. Okay, it's open.
Well, I'll also just start out by saying that, I guess I'm echoing what's already been said, but I certainly do appreciate the hard work of the document. I think we have a very fine document here. I think it's, I think there are two things to remember that are both rather critical. Number one, we're not finalizing this document. It goes to city council, they're going to be the finalizing body. And I personally think we have a document that is appropriate to go to city council for their feedback. The other point that I would make is this is a dynamic document. While it might say 2018 to 2038, it is regularly updated, and my opinion should be reviewed and updated even more often than we do. There's nothing in there that is cast in concrete that lasts for 20 years, no matter how you say it. I think it probably should be looked at, not to this depth, but various parts of it should be looked at rather regularly, such as if a legacy is approved, and I think it is important to go back in and say, okay, what are the implications of that, especially if you know what is approved there? So I think we need to recognize this is a dynamic document that is regularly updated. But with that, I'm very pleased with it, and I will certainly say I'm especially happy to see that you did get the comment in there about including sidewalks in the master plan, and I really think that's a really, I really appreciate that.
I agree with Bill that it's, this is a well-written document. I want to say that I appreciate the concerns of Mr. Cox and Ms. Trest. I just don't know that, and I may even agree with you, particularly on the environmental of Ms. Trestrail, but I don't know that that belongs in a comprehensive document that should be, particularly when you're talking about term limits, that's legislative, right? That's establishing a tree count. I think it might, I just think they might be beyond the scope of the comprehensive.
Exactly.
Good ideas that they are, I just don't know that they are within the scope of this document.
I would be willing to look at it if we ever get a final plan for Legacy.
Absolutely.
And I suspect that when a final plan, very likely come back to this, to this body, I would think.
I would absolutely be willing to discuss those.
I also think that, well, first of all, thank you so much for coming and thank you for speaking. That's really nice when we get people here to relay their opinions and to come talk to us. I really appreciate you guys doing that. I think you guys made some excellent points. I too am very pleased with the inclusion of the survey results, and I think that it empowers the citizens of the city to have those included. I really liked, both of you guys mentioned, I think Rob did too, the government transparency. I remember that that was an issue that came across during the survey results. I think that that's a great point, having some transparency, how appointments are made. I don't know if there is really a procedure for how appointments are made. I think if there is a procedure, that's, you know, just a useful tidbit that could go in when you talk about the difference in term limits, I think is legislative. That would be something interesting, and also continuing education. But I think, I think you guys had some, some great input and great ideas, and I'm glad that you conveyed those.
I would just say, I would highly recommend that anybody who believes, and I would have to tell you, I would agree with them, that anybody who believes that there should be term limits or any of the bodies, that's really a matter should go to council, because they set the guidelines. They make the appointments, they review the applications.
And they have a procedure. They certainly have a procedure.
And that's certainly where, I would agree with it, but it's not something that we can do anything about.
Totally out of our jurisdiction.
I have a question of how we publicize the public hearing for tonight, something in the daily press, where else could we?
On the city's website, on the government access channels, Horizon and Cox, yeah, it was also on Facebook.
I guess my concern was having enough notification for the actual document to be read. I'd hoped that we would have had the draft before last Thursday for people to have an opportunity to really review it and to see a document for the first time for the public. I know we've been updated, you know, through chapter by chapter, because I think it's important at this stage that we do get some sort of pulse from the community that the draft is, you know, has been accepted and fully reviewed. And I would like to say, my interpretation of the comprehensive plan, yes, it's an advisory document, but this is basically our strategic plan. The Code of Virginia actually states that this is, people, citizens' involvement is a very critical element. And so we, I know we all recognize that this is a snapshot in 2018, and how can we predict 20 years out? But as we all know, if we don't have a vision for the future, we're not going to have a future. And so the comments that we're hearing tonight, and I want to thank the two speakers for coming out and taking the time to look at this voluminous document, it has been a very thoughtful process. I do want, again, congratulate Danan for doing an outstanding job, being thrown into the deep end to really craft this document. His marching orders were pretty tall to reduce this document, to eliminate duplication, to deal with lots of comments coming in from our citizenry in a way that the document flows. And when I read through from cover to cover, you've really done a great job. And I would hope that when we, when we go to the next step, that the council will recognize the amount of diligence and effort that's gone into this document, that it is not just a document that's going to be sitting on somebody's desk to be referred to on occasion. This is, this is a document that our citizens are supporting at this point. And so I would hope, even with the comments about governance, this is, again, feedback we got from our citizens concerning wanting to see more refreshing faces on our boards and commissions. I think that's part of a dynamic community where people's voices are valued and respected, and with new ideas and new faces, we don't know what our future might be with our boards and commissions. So I take on board the two comments that we received tonight concerning governance, and I would hope that our council will see the relevance in looking at the term limitations on boards and commissions. The terms themselves, we know, are by statute, that's actually a state statute, but the number of terms that an individual can actually serve is actually decided at the local level. So we hear comments, so thank you for bringing those up. I do have one question concerning the chapter eight dash six. It mentions resource conservation can include agricultural activities, and I know, I'm sorry to put you guys on the spot, but when I read that, could someone clarify what agricultural activities would mean under resource conservation? Do you want to get back to me?
As far as I know, it is in our zoning ordinance that permitted use in resource conservation is agriculture. I don't think it gets more specific than that.
So active farming would be agriculture?
It's a rather large umbrella.
Growing corn would be agriculture? Excuse me?
It's...
It's a rather large umbrella that's covered.
Okay.
Certainly planting corn would be an agricultural.
Within a resource conservation area?
Yeah, I mean, you know, assuming it's more than just.
And agricultural for profit acceptable? Not, I'm not talking about a little garden plot for.
Talking about a farm, basically, a bona fide farm.
When you say agricultural, you kind of, you kind of, that kind of, in a way, connotates what it is. It's agricultural, not, not little, small personal gardens. It's, it's a term which applies to probably more commercial or larger agriculture. I think that's probably pretty.
Also, I think there might be a conditional use permit required for that. I'm not certain, though, that might apply to some residential districts, I'd have to look that up.
Yes, page eight, eight-six, when it, when it lists the, the uses under resource conservation.
Mm-hmm. But I'm, I'm talking about our zoning ordinance, which I don't have in front of me, but.
And I, I guess I just had one more comment, and I hadn't polled anyone concerning this, but two individuals really came to mind who went beyond the call of duty, I felt, in the actual iteration of this document. One was Vicki Diggs, who was our former Assistant to the City Manager, who really was of extreme help as community participation team was getting organized, and we really didn't know our direction. She was extremely helpful. I know she's no longer with the city, but I just wondered if, if we could perhaps give some recognition in the document. And the other person that I would like to recognize is now of our Planning Commission, she doesn't know I'm telling, asking, but Angie Emmett was a volunteer whose extraordinary efforts throughout the process were just exemplary. She volunteered to record and publish every minute notes from our numerous meetings. And I begged to find out how many meetings we had, but it seemed to me, every time we turned around, there was another meeting over the comp plan. And also, just the solicitation of citizens' comments. And so I just would like to, to offer those two individuals perhaps being included for special recognition in the document.
Exactly why maybe we don't always need term limits, because she, her knowledge certainly came with experience. Certainly, in your case, exactly what you're saying is, why so valuable? Any other comments? Often not appreciated, but thank you for appreciating Vicki's comment, Lee. Any other comments?
If there are no other comments, then I'm going to move that we recommend approval of the comp plan and forward it to City Council. And while it's not part of my recommendation, it's still my understanding that City Council is going to want to have a work session before they have a public hearing.
Correct.
So basically, I'm recommending we approve it, I guess, for the council for a work session.
Well, before that gets seconded, I do have just some brief comments to make.
Please.
One thing is, I would like to apologize to Lee. I do, I would have wanted to get this document out sooner, which is one of the reasons why I tried to get the second draft out significantly in advance of the April work session. However, I was working on this up until last Wednesday. There were a lot of little things to try and track down, and in particular, that appendix chapter with the work program kind of had to be recreated from scratch. However, as Bill said, this document, once it is approved tonight, well, if it is approved tonight, should be available for public scrutiny and comment, and as far as I know, there is no real hurry by City Council to write through and adopt this. So it should be possibly several months before it is current, adopted, so there should be plenty of time to look at it. As for changes or modifications, I do have one, actually, to add myself, courtesy of our city engineer who came up to me this afternoon, in fact, and asked me if I could get this to you so that we could amend it. Referring to the infrastructure chapter, section on transportation, if I can find the page, page seven-to-11, future roadway improvement recommendations, the section discussing the widening of Victory Boulevard. Our city engineer would like to slightly amend this language to include enhancements to the roadway, as well as just for widening. The reasoning she gives for this is because we're currently exploring other options to improve Victory Boulevard, because the older plan of trying to get a divided four-lane road out of Victory Boulevard is having difficulty getting funding and approval from VDOT. So she is looking at other opportunities for extending the shoulders, adding a multi-use path along the northern side, and she would like the language in the comp plan updated to reflect this, maybe to make it a little easier to get it at scale in VDOT approval. So that would just mean changing the title of this subsection and maybe adding a little bit more language discussing improvements that are not specifically a road widening. But that is the only thing I have to add.
I don't think I'd have any objection to that.
Would this mean the elimination of curb medians that would be landscaped? Or do you know enough at this point?
Um.
Because we spent some time talking about the gateway.
Right.
Coming into the city.
I think one of the options is using basically the stretch of right-of-way that we already have on the northern edge, which is mostly just grass on the northern edge of Victory Boulevard, to try and extend the shoulder by several feet out, so that in the event of an emergency, that shoulder could be used as a third lane, so it could be a three-lane roadway as an evacuation route out of the city. Other options, I think, include reversible lane, or it's all kind of up in the air, but the city engineer is trying to look at passing some of these options and getting them approved by VDOT, possibly getting them funded. So she would just like that language in the comp plan updated to kind of bolster support for that in the application process.
I guess my opinion would be that it could certainly say something like, you know, I'm just, I haven't thought of words, because it just, just come up with, study alternative options for improving Victory Boulevard. I would go that far, but I wouldn't want to get into the point of reversible lanes and reversible lanes. That's, that's much too much for a 20-year plan, in my opinion. This document.
Right. That's all we would be looking for, is just kind of a general cover statement, broadening a little bit.
I was, I was wondering, and maybe I've missed it, but I thought that we had a map in here that delineated the districts. You know, there was some discussion over the voting districts matching the planning districts. Do you remember that? Like where the line, the boundaries are for each district?
I have been trying to find the GIs files for those. I have no idea where they are. They might not exist at this point. But the thing about the zoning districts or the planning districts is that they are basically analogous, they follow the zoning. We have three very distinct residential zoning categories, and the planning districts are basically defined by those categories. So if you look at a zoning map, you can basically tell by where the yellow, the pink, and the orange is, what those planning districts are. The reason they are distinct from the voting districts is because I believe those zoning categories were established back in the 70s or whenever the zoning for the city was established. But the voting categories changed over time as population changes. So over time, they've probably drifted apart from the planning districts, and that is why they are distinct. And so we can't just say, oh, they're the same as the voting districts, because the voting districts do change. The zoning does not.
The zoning districts and the planning districts, I mean, could we not get a map delineates exactly where those boundaries are? Do we not have that available at anywhere?
You would have to probably create one from scratch, which would take time, but is doable, yes.
I would just like to see that in here, because I think people coming in and they're reading this, well, you know, if you don't really know Bacozen, and you're reading what it says about each district, for me, it's hard to envision, well, does it include this street or that street? And I think that, and I've been here all my life, so I'm just thinking, new folks coming in, it would be very difficult to ascertain exactly where they begin and end.
We could definitely try and get that added to the final draft, yes.
And I, I would, I guess, piggyback on that. I guess we had a discussion earlier, because our topography really does not vary that much, it would seem to me that, you know, zoning districts and planning districts and voting districts could be very similar. I know zoning can, can change a little bit, but it's back to that governance also. I mean, by having planning district the same as voting district, it would seem to me you're incorporating some sort of accountability from, you know, residents living in those areas, you know, to hold their local councilperson accountable for any decisions affecting a particular district compared to planning district.
Do we, do we need to amend his motion?
Can we change anything with it in regard to which you brought up?
The two changes would be the Victory Boulevard thing, and then acknowledgements of Vicki Diggs and Angie, if everyone's approving of that.
I would, I would, there's one thing I wanted to acknowledge, I'd like to acknowledge Bill Travis, because I am very grateful to him, serving in the capacity that he did, because he was a great guiding force, I think, for the CPT. I think he, his knowledge of having done before, and I think he was certainly, I know he had to be a very useful and integral part of the CPT, staying on track and not maybe knowing some things, areas that they were given. Bill probably guided you very gently back to where you needed to be or be on track and to focus on what you were supposed to be focusing on. So I want to put in there that Bill Travis should be acknowledged for his service at last.
Not necessary, but I appreciate it.
But it is necessary, very necessary. I appreciate it, and I know that our community does too. With that said, now, Bill, you.
End your motion, you want to just say with the.
Well, I think, I think I would leave the motion with the slight adjustments that we mentioned.
That's it.
May I also say no objections?
If we don't have any further discussion, and if anybody wants to discuss anything else, please feel free to do so, but if not, do you have a second?
Second.
All right.
Travis.
Aye.
Commissioner Goddard.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Beal.
Aye.
Chair LeWishaw.
Aye.
That motion carried by vote of six to zero.
Thank you. With that said, we have, I think we have done a great job. Everyone is to be commended that participated and attended many meetings, and we certainly are gonna, certainly gonna say that publicly, that we do appreciate it.
I certainly don't want to interrupt that at all, but.
While he wants to have something to say here.
Well, when we talk about where this goes from here, I talked with the city manager a little bit about the need for a joint work session between City Council and the Planning Commission. I do believe we're going to want to take that step. Having said that, I believe the city manager wanted to have a little conversation with council to kind of see exactly when we'll schedule that. As far as, once the joint work session is done and taken it to public hearing with City Council, there is the possibility they will want to delay it several months in the summertime. But again, I don't know that for sure, and I'll have some conversations with the city manager. I'll certainly let everybody know.
That our participation is ended, but in a sense, it's still continuing, because we did talk about it in our work session, that we would like to know if they would like to have a joint work session with us, and that would be good, because we could certainly interact while we, while we have some of the things in there that we.
Right, and I would also remind the, the commission that if you look at this plan implementation schedule that Danan's included in the comprehensive plan, there's going to be a lot of activity that will be going on in the future. There's talk about revision of ordinances, regardless of what kind of ordinance it is, and completion of some of the long-range plans. So, you know, there's like a short-term one to, what, eight years, six to 10, and there's 10 and more. So there's certainly plenty to do. The document may be set, but the work is definitely.
Okay, all right, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead then and start at the end. And we have a gentleman down there who I neglected to find out who he was and why he's here, so maybe now he can.
Sure. My name is Andy Mullins, I'm one of the attorneys with Wayne Moore's office. Asked me to start sitting in on Planning Commission meetings, just so that you all have the access to the city attorney's office if you have any questions or anything comes up, so we're.
Wonderful.
Hopefully I'll be able to start sitting in on more of the Planning Commission meetings, and here's a resource for you all.
We, we welcome you. There are certainly times, you know, we, we, we need you. All right. Well, thank you so much. Libby, you have any thing you want to?
I just have a question then. If you are going to start sitting in on some, are you available if we, when we do get our agenda package, if we do have a question about, that's possibly legal, adjacent, or something, you know, just a legal question that we have, can we contact you?
Absolutely. Please do.
Great, yes, wonderful, thank you.
Lee?
I'd like to suggest that we possibly institute an annual award for a good commercial development or a project that has come through the planning department. This is sort of a, sort of a little bit of a personal, local pride, perhaps, that I have in Bacozen. I've been watching very carefully the transformation of our old post office on Bacozen Avenue, and the folks who purchased that property and have spent probably the last eight months transforming it into just a wonderful little positive, active, commercial enterprise. And that's sort of the example that, that I, that I have, that perhaps we, as a group of planning commissioners, if there's a project that came through the planning department that we could look at as a group or as a team, or have recommendations coming from the city, any resident, that maybe this might be something we might want to perhaps look at on an annual basis, so.
Just quickly, I would echo it. I'd like to focus, and I really appreciate the speakers that come out today. Feedback is really important, and at the risk of letting, letting anybody else off, I think probably Angie and Lee will agree with me, I want to especially thank Mr. Cox, because he was not a member of the CPT, he was a pretty, he's a very, very active and very dependable member, who had a real, real valuable contribution. I'm really pleased to see him come out and keep staying with this project, so I thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Okay, well, I don't have anything else to add to it. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, thank you. And we'll adjourn. Thank you.
While suddenly Michigan all run home and watch.